Can I speak to that? Madam Chair?
Sure.
We did have a budget subcommittee meeting and Jim also attended along with the other three members of the budget subcommittee and we came up with a list of reductions and a list of additions, kind of moving the money around. And after the meeting, I had some further, I looked at the budget again more in depth and felt that some of those numbers might have been too aggressive and others not aggressive enough, so I made some further changes. I did share them with Jim and John, just two members. I didn't want to violate the OMA by sending it to everybody, so I just sent it to those two. But could I, I know people have a resentment toward passing things out at the meeting, but the only reason I'm asking to pass out this two-page sheet is to make it easy to follow along with what's already in the packet as to what the budget committee subcommittee was doing the other day. So if anybody's willing to accept it, I'll pass these over. If you don't want to accept one, that's fine too, but I think it's going to be easy to follow.
Before you pass it out, do you mind if I just pass mine out?
If mine's willing to take those two there.
Well, mine is equal to yours and then adds.
Yeah. I'd like to suggest that when we do this, we might just agree upon the reductions first so we know how much money we have to spend on the other line items and then we can address the math interventionist and other positions. I don't mind. Oh, well, Jim, yeah, I see what you did. Okay, so Jim, if you look at the, what's in your packet, if you look at the, this summary by object code, the adopted budget by object code, it might be easy for you to figure out why, you know, we came up with these numbers and how comfortable we are with them. Basically, we looked at the three-year expenditure history and kind of estimated what this year's expenses are going to be and settled in on those numbers. So, for instance, I, we didn't do it the other night, I don't believe we agreed to the ODD transportation reduction, but I looked at that afterwards and if you look at that object code 5511, they're all in order. And I think I highlighted that section. The special ed out of district is 256,000 this year. We were budgeting 300 for next year. We're suggesting that that be reduced by 25. The vocational, the tuition, the vocational transportation, we budgeted, we expended 41,000 to 61. We're suggesting we reduce that by 4,000 to 44 instead of 48 for next year. And the private school out of district tuition, we spent 34, 838 and we're proposing 55 next year, suggesting that we reduce that by 18,000. And I think, one of the things, page 10 of this, came out, 10 of 23, and the bottom, they're highlighted.
Do you want to make it 300 by every now or then, or make it 300, or make it 48, or make it less?
What's that? John, I'm sorry.
It's your total number for your out-of, for your special ed. I see a budget that says 300. Do you want to reduce it to 300 by 25?
Right. Yeah, the numbers in the bottom, in the last column on the keynote, but I put it in the packet, don't you pay attention to it because it was before the adjustments were made. So they don't mean anything.
Okay, yeah, just take those numbers off.
Right, right. So what I'm suggesting is, okay, for the transportation ODD special ed, it'd be 275. For the vocational technical, it'd be 44,000. And for the ODD transportation, private schools, it'd be 37. Lisa, I had a question. The, on the transportation cost, Lisa?
Yes.
On the transportation cost, the number that you budgeted for the private school transportation out of district of 55,000, that doesn't include the 25,000 categorical credit that we're going to receive, right? So our actual out-of-pocket cost would be less, 55,000 minus the 25,000 categorical, the credit back from the state.
All right.
Okay. So that's why I felt that it was okay to make those changes because we didn't consider the categorical. John, are there any others on here that weren't approved by the budget? Oh, the one socket vote tuition, that's 55610. And that's on page 10 of 23 also. If you look at the expenditures for the vote tuition, it was 52,478 for the regular ed and 27,662 for the special ed, but there was another invoice that's in the packet that we paid tonight, so it brought the total to 110,115 for this year's expenses. And we were budgeting 150 for next year, suggesting that that be reduced to 120 by $30,000. The Davies vote school, we don't have, we didn't have any students apply to the best of my ability. This was just based on the RISE projection for how many might go. You can only go to Davies if they don't offer the program we can want at the one socket area vote school. We're a sending community for one socket area vote, so I think these all make sense. Other than that, John, were these the same numbers or the same?
Yep, yellow ones.
Okay. So those are the only new ones that I put in. I did, I made some minor adjustments on the conferences. I don't think I reduced it by quite as much as we had the other night. I just tweaked the numbers a little. While Jim added on his sheet, the difference between Jim's sheet and my sheet is he reduced the overtime by $20,000, so he came up with 297,000 in reductions.
And I'd also try to make another $40,000 reduction in busing based on the credits that we are going to get in our hopefully flat fee services and savings.
Well, that's factored in already. I think she based it on the, the rebate.
4112.
Right. 4112. Yeah. So that's already factored in.
That's factored in. It has the new busing routes, the savings and all that other stuff.
Where we, the spot where we were.
Right. He and the rebates that they're posting.
Yeah, the credit for the.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
The form, the form. Okay.
So eliminate that.
Can we vote, can I suggest that we vote on the reductions first so that we know how much we have before we start with the additions?
So include the overtime?
Actually, we vote on the overtime separate.
I'd rather not.
I'd rather just vote on the 277, 970 first, which is.
That's on my sheet.
Yeah.
When it, yeah, of course. So the overtime would be for directly a math, a maintenance technician, which is a grounds person. So right now, to get that done with paying overtime, but I'd like to put a half person in, I can call it later, for a maintenance tech, which will be fully paid by a reduction in overtime.
Are we paying overtime now because we have that short staffed positions on?
Yes.
We've left.
Shorter.
Shorter. That's.
We've left two positions open. This year, we've left just a couple of positions in the custodian department from the previous year and that's why we're incurring such high costs. But I, I'm in favor of just filling the position immediately, even if it's a long-term stop versus paying overtime.
If we fill the position, wouldn't it take a cannabis?
No, because if we don't have a grounds person, we need half a grounds person if they're the outside grounds.
And who would fill that?
I think the internal people go out when they're, when they can, the grounds. That's why, I mean superintendent, that's why I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's a misnomer because I've heard it perpetuated probably more than it should be, that anybody's purposely left any position open in order to create overtime. That's just a fallacy that should have been perpetuated. Physicians don't get filled very easily. Sometimes they don't get filled because the opening is created by a discipline matter that has to be used up. We have people who have been out sick. We have a situation now where we have a work injury and that person's out. So please don't think that anytime a position's open, it purposely doesn't get filled through overtime. Even with a full staff, we can't get substitutes for custodians. We have, you have two full-time maintenance people and a full-time electrician. You have, I think it's 115 acres, you have a sports athletic complex that's being utilized beyond the capacity for us to maintain it right now. I'm going to be real candid with you. We got whacked by, by a psychist of saying, guys, you got to do a better job keeping it up. That facility sees a tremendous amount of use. We pay overtime in order to stay up with the fields in the fall, in the spring. We pay overtime during the winter for shoveling and snow removal, but we track that internally pretty closely. So yeah, I don't have any problem supporting your, your position that with that, you will see a reduction in overtime easily.
Let me just clarify. I didn't hear anybody up here say that anything was left open to generate overtime. I just made that point. No one up here said that in the last five minutes.
So honestly, I've heard that point made in the past to me, maybe not publicly on YouTube, maybe, I put clearly at meetings from another member of the school committee. And that's not what happens and never has.
No, I just, I, you, you said it, it stood out to me because I didn't hear anybody say that and I heard you say it, so.
Well, thank you for correcting it, but yeah, it's, you know, what I said out was the positions are left vacant and then we have to refer overtime cost to fill in for those people because I would refer it to me as my possible, because I said, I think the production is better. Thank you for clarifying now, Mr. Cooper. I appreciate it.
I thought it was clear, I'm sorry.
It wasn't, but now it is, thank you.
Anybody, so can we, what are the?
You got to make a motion?
Yeah, I made a motion that we approved the reduction.
Oh, we did want to ask a question.
I'm sorry.
I just want clarification and I don't know if it's, I think it's going to come from Lisa. The overtime, the overage that we're occurring that looks like it's, we could save as possible 20,000, is that in maintenance for tech grounds, that that would wash that or should it be maintenance in general?
So the overtime analysis we looked at was specific to grounds. Grounds preparation, landscaping, cutting, trimming, field preparation. Well, your daughter plays softball. You know the amount of work that goes into the springtime. Turf field maintenance in the width of the grounds, shoveling, plowing. We see a lot of overtime. This 19 and a half hour person who will get paid a different hourly rate than 27 plus an hour, so for every hour that person works, it's one less hour overtime for somebody else.
So that would, that would offset that, is what I'm, I just wanted to make sure that what Jim's proposing will help the issue or do we need none inside versus outside?
It's specific to outside.
Thank you.
If we have been able to fill the two vacant positions, would it eliminate the need for the overtime expenditures for the grounds person?
I missed the first beginning, I'm sorry.
If we had been able to fill the two vacant positions that were largely vacant for the year, would it alleviate the need for a person half-time to take care of the grounds? Because clearly the staff that's there are the ones that are incurring the overtime expenditures because they're having to do the work. So I just wondered if you were able to have a full complement, would they be able to do this instead of hiring yet another person?
So the, thank you, Mary. I think the positions you referred to are custodian positions. And so basically what the custodians do during the square year is they have lumbos. And if time allows for them during the day, during the week, which doesn't always do that, they can get up and do some minimal grass cutting. They try to do what they can, but they can't do a whole complex. So custodians are really meant for inside. So you have two maintenance people with, I don't, I don't have to go on about the facilities, the inside facilities they have to take. So when they are cutting grass and you have an enormous amount of ground, guys, you know, we get calls when, well, Jim will tell you, Halliwell, Halliwell needs to be cut, it's field day. Okay, we pull our guys from inside to go cut the grass over there. So it's kind of a long-winded answer, but the positions you're talking about do not have that type of effect on grounds. You really, this position will help tremendously outside.
Well, who's been doing, I know you've been understaffed in.
In custodians.
With custodians.
Yes.
So who's been cutting the grass?
Two maintenance people. And on overtime, we'll pull in people on a weekend or after hours who are custodians to help cut the grass and stay up with the trimming and the landscaping, the field turf, because we only have two.
So even if you filled the other two positions that have been vacant with full-time people, it still wouldn't alleviate the need for a half-time lonesome person?
Honestly, no. You've, you've needed the grounds person for a while. You can't stay up with it and I'm worried about the complex. Remember, Mary, the positions that are open that were being referred to are custodians and so that's where they're needed inside the buildings. And as time allows, they get out to cut. For instance, on a, on a break in April, Marty will pull all the custodians together for maybe a day in the maintenance people and they'll all attack the grounds. They'll work at the high school, they'll do what they can. So during a vacation period, we can do some of that, but we have so much more during the, other than just an April vacation where we've got to staff the grounds.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve reductions totaling 297,970, which represents the things on both Kim and my sheet that are in common, plus the $20,000 for overtime for a total of 297,970. Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, to move?
Next, I think we should take the additions, the increases, the proposed increases. I've got, I don't know, Jim has some extra ones there, so let's take it in chunks because I think the top half of Jim's is what we kind of agreed to the other night, except for the turnover. We didn't lower the turnover. I don't think we did anything with the turnover. But the turnover Lisa was uncomfortable with, I'm uncomfortable with the 165 turnover. I think she expressed the same discomfort the other night.
I said it's uncomfortable.
You didn't say you weren't comfortable with it? I thought you said you, you didn't have the same, the number of.
No, I said we had to beat up about 60,000, that's why we had five of the positions that were still being moved around.
Lisa, I, I don't, I don't get what you said the other night, but right now, before the whole lot, are you comfortable with it or not?
I'm, I'm comfortable with it as long as you can be to realize that a lot of these things like the transportation and the tuitions are all floating targets of the roll of dice. So if we find that we shorten what areas we're going to take from another area to fill that gap, that's what we do.
I thought I misunderstood that the other night because I thought I heard, I thought when you said something about the turnover, I said I am too uncomfortable with that too. I thought, I guess I didn't understand what you were saying. But I'm uncomfortable with it because you initially started at 135 and then we went up to the 165 and changed whatever. And that's, that's gambling that you're going to have savings that you don't really know you're going to have. And I think it's easier to predict with some certainty that the expenditures are going to come in kind of where they were this year, but with the turnover, that jumps all over the place. And if you put that number too high and we don't achieve it, then we've got a deficit. And, and so I'd rather go with a conservative number in that because in the past, I think last year, you already had three retirements in the bag when you adopted the budget and it, is that correct?
We have two this.
Yeah, but last year you had more than two at this time, right?
Yes, but our turnover clearly exceeded the 200,000 that we had.
It was actually Lisa's recommendation that that increase last year, Mike, remember that?
Mr. Cornell would like to ask a question.
I wasn't privy to the meeting and I, and I was, you know, it was a budget subcommittee. I just stand that, I'm not, I'm just saying I wasn't privy to it. Someone, I don't know, what is this lowest, lowest turnover on is 135. What's that, what does that mean? 135,000, what is that?
That's how much the budget is to turn.
Those are savings that we accrue throughout the year through changes in staff.
I mean, your budget falls. So that's where it's, like a surplus almost, not surplus per se, but like a.
Unspent salary.
Unspent salary because your budget falls. You're hoping for retirements, leave of absence, you're saving on monitoring.
And you're saying, and Mike, by the way, you're saying you'd like a lower number. And Lisa, you're okay with 135,000 in.
Who said 135? Lisa was actually okay with 165. Remember last year we had this discussion, remember? We, Lisa, Lisa recommended, I think it was a $200,000 number, you were concerned when we did it, we did it, she asked it. I think her opinion means a lot. I mean, you know.
I mean, none of us have a crystal ball.
No, I think, I think what you said is a fair statement is you're rolling the dice. Hopefully we have.
Yeah.
I would just rather roll this one conservatively because we're not where we were last year at this time and we probably won't have what vacancies unfilled that we had last year either.
Madam Chair, just, just, so I just want to jump to my sheet for a second because, I mean, I know much speaking about this, but we could add in the additional math interventionist, the additional accounts payable clerk, and that's subject to the new superintendent signing off, a new grounds maintenance person. And I, and this is subject to Claire, I guess, but I'd like to see some Common Core seminars in the district. I don't know if that, you agree with that or not, but, okay, so then I put $5,000 into the Common Core. And we would add an additional tech person in at halftime of $40,000. It kept the low, the turnover line as is, we can handle, we can take care of 100% of this.
Where's the $40,000?
Because if you take 135, Mike's got, Mike's got it at 135 up top. If that goes to 165, that frees up, well, it frees up, I guess, 25 of it. So we can, we can bring it to 175 and do the computer tech. Yeah, 30.
So you're bringing, you're bringing.
I'm just adding back the, the only thing, I'm doing what I just said, adding a halftime computer tech and taking out your reduction in the turnover allowance.
Are you, are you taking it out with that number or are you putting it back in?
Well, putting, I'm bringing it back to what it is in the budget.
I thought you were bringing it up above what is in the budget.
Well, an extra 5,000, so instead of 165.
No, you're bringing it up an extra 19,000, I think. Anybody got a capital addition over there? If he's adding it in, 19,000, then you add, you increased the, you increased above the 165 by 19,000. So your turnover is, you know, like close to 185,000, is that what?
I'll bring it up to 180,000.
Madam Chair, just, it's a small number, Madam Chair, but I'm not sure why truant officer for 5,500 is in there.
You can take it out.
Use the top. Oh, I'm sorry, you took it out?
Oh, you can.
You really should.
And we're at 180.
He wants us to take truant officer out?
I'll make a plug for the truant officer. By state law, we're supposed to have a truant officer.
Mike, you had, you had a truant officer ever since I've been here. We follow state law and every year it's appointed by the school committee and it's been me. And we have turned the situation around, around attendance, so that I'm not going into family court anymore. We have a court magistrate that I worked for several years to finally make happen. That court magistrate has come to our district the last two years and it's running very efficiently. And candidly, I can easily talk to one of the assistant principals at the middle school, high school, who work very closely with me to the point where I don't have to attend those. I've never attended them this past year. They have coordinated them. The 5,500 stipend is not necessary.
I'm not just interested in what you just described as truant officers' responsibilities. I'm hearing constantly that we have kids coming to this school system who do not live in the district and one of the functions of many truant officers in many other districts is to track down residency. And I also think we have kids who are chronically absent, who might not be absent enough to warrant truancy court, but who need some intervention. And I think a meeting with the truant officer, with the parents, even just going to the house to see if the kid is really homesick that day.
So if you would ask those questions, you would found out that that's exactly what we do.
Oh, who goes, who investigates the residency?
Detective Pat Durini, myself, I've been to houses, she's been to houses, principals have been to houses, I've been to a house with a student, we're out of the school. So if you would ask those questions, you would find out.
Well, I just don't, I don't think that's.
And honestly, we do a super job of, of monitoring attendance. Kids get letters every 10, 15, 20 days. I've met with parents. This district's turned its attendance around, student attendance around tremendously. So, you know, frankly, I don't, you all want to spend 5,500 on a truant officer to do something that we're already doing? Go ahead. God bless you.
Well, I don't think it's the superintendent's job to be going to houses to check on residency. I think you've got more important things to do, whoever holds the position has more important things to do than that. And I agree with you, it can be delegated, but if the new superintendent should choose to not want to have that responsibility or feels it can be assigned to assistant principals, then fine, he can. But if he wants money to have a position like every other school district in the state does, then he can, he'll have the money available to fill that position. So I just want to leave the option there for decisions to be made and not have to worry about is the money there, money am I? And I know in the job description, it says by the hour, so I mean, my 5,500 is just a number I put in, could be less, could be more, but I think I just feel.
Yeah, I think we're pretty far down the rabbit hole as to what people are doing, so.
Okay, so the motion was.
Can I make a motion? I'm going to motion on the, on the, on the increase side for the 297,990. Should be made up as follows. Am I wrong, Mike?
Well, yeah, that 19,148, you can't add that.
Can I? So it would be the additional nurse teacher, the additional math interventionist, unemployment compensation, videoographer, oil heat, facilities, truant officer, half math interventionist, half accounts payable clerk, subject to the new superintendent signing off on it, a half ground maintenance technician for grounds, a $5,000 to be put into the Common Core district seminars.
I don't need that.
There's, there's.
I can absolutely do without that.
Okay. So then strike that and a computer tech halftime at 30K with the balance being plugged into the turnover allowance, which would probably be about 180,000, $20,000 more, but $15,000 more than it is right now.
194,148.
194,148, thank you.
It's what? What's that now?
That's the turnover allowance we have in the budget.
194.
And what do we carve as budget?
Starting out as 135, she raised it to 165 to balance the budget. I was trying to bring it back down to 135, now we're going back up to 194.
If we take clear $5,000 out and return it down to 189, are you comfortable with that figure? Return on my own? I don't find it, but I don't have a crystal ball, so. I'll watch it just like we did last year as the year goes on.
I think we're saying best estimate, best guess.
Yes, yes.
So best guess was okay.
Right, we'll watch it and we'll make adjustments.
Second. Jim, can you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What did you add? It was math, halftime math interventionist, halftime accounts payable, halftime maintenance technician and a halftime computer tech person. And how much is that? I don't see 30.
30 in the description.
But Lisa said it was okay, so that's going to break.
Well, I want to know, Lisa, how much would that be?
Oh, if you're adding it in the 40, if it's 189, then I agree.
Can I just ask a question? It just makes a big difference. Are you adding to the 0.5 that already exists or are you bringing in?
Well, that brings it down to 189. That's it, so.
Well, I won't deal with that. I mean, it's too far. I can tell you that my kids are, I heard that there are a lot of computers that are sitting around, nobody can get them to service them. Well, we just spent 370,000 off the computers, we need somebody to service them. So that, that's my issue there. And let me, I mean, just a general statement, I mean, we ran, what was that surplus this year? I mean, it was at least $850,000, 350 we had.
There was 650 that we spent, 350.
Yeah, so a million dollars. So we're worried about $20 here and there.
Not worried about $20.
40.
Look.
I mean, 20, I'm sorry, 20,000, 40,000, wherever it is.
So isn't it over 100?
I don't think we're going to.
It's like 120. Madam Chair?
I don't know about anybody else. It's getting late for me and this number is bouncing everywhere and I'm not keeping them all straight. It's very difficult and I, and I know, I'm not opposed to getting things the night of, but it's really hard for me to keep all these numbers straight and what numbers are where and what, I mean, it's a big decision to make these additions. I think there are things that we need, but I want to make sure that we have our eyes dotted and our teeth frosted and I don't think we do with some of them. I'm not saying that I don't want them. I just don't think we're ready to vote on this tiger thing at once, so maybe if we could break it down a little bit more and then maybe bring something back to the next meeting where we have better numbers from.
It's only a 30 days.
So we have 30 days.
30 days.
So exactly.
30 days, we got 30.
So I, let me, let me address it. I mean, so we're gonna add in the additional nurse teacher. And the reason for that is that it's gonna be a special one. Additional math interventionist. So I'll follow in everything Mike adds on this.
Yeah, I'm on yours. I'm going right on yours.
Yep, okay. Then everything that's on mine, except now you can knock out that common court for 5,000.
Okay.
And, and you're gonna add in a computer tech at halftime at 40K.
And that will cover the tech, including benefits, because it's making that person full time?
Okay. And all, and what I'm gonna do is, where it says lower turnover allowance...
Yeah.
It's going to go to...
189, 148.
So it's 165 in the budget now. It's gonna go to 189.
Jim, could I ask you to withdraw your motion and act on these separately? Because we're adding an awful lot in personnel. And we just looked at the fiscal impact statement for, after we gratified the teachers contract. And when we did that, we looked at, if we got a 4% increase in our operating budget, how much of that money would be needed for the teacher salaries that we currently have? And it's a huge chunk of the 4%. Now we're adding 265,000 in additional salaries to this budget by putting in the canoe positions that we're talking about. I don't think it's sustainable.
Wait, 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 wait. Don't over exaggerate. So the, the additional nurse teacher is not, that's, that's by state law.
Yeah, I know.
But you can do that. The math interventionist, so it's 30, it's 64 and another 30, $94,000 brings us to break even. That's break even. That's what we had last year. That's what we need to do this year. Otherwise, I'd like to know what number of those 75 students are not gonna be helped.
I'm not having a problem with math interventionist.
So then the accounts payable clerk, it's subject to the new superintendent. So that money can be popped for right now. Okay? So if they need additional help, which they're crying for, great. The next, the maintenance tech is being paid for by overtime. The computer tech is in absolutely needed position right now for a half position for $40,000. So that's, that's my argument. I mean, we, again, we, we went over budget by a million dollars last year. And we have computers we just purchased that we can't fix. You know, there's a technical problem. We can't put anything with them. They're being, they're sitting down. And if I'm wrong, let me know. So, um, not listening.
You're in the boat, Tom.
So, all I'm saying is, it doesn't make sense. We're not, we're not being smart about this. We need people in positions to get, to move us forward. That's all. And this isn't a lot of money. It's ridiculous, to be honest with you.
Jim, does...
Just put sunset clause on it next year.
The, John, do you remember the dollar amount that we moved for the teacher salary account with step times? Half a million dollars. So half a million dollars, we just added 265 to it. And what did we figure?
We didn't add any, what do you mean we added?
Yeah, we had 265. We had 105,000 for the nurse, 64 for the math interventionist, 30,000 for the other half, 28,000 for the accounts payable, 20,000 for the groundskeeper, 40,000 for the computer person. I think that's a new additional 265. So we're at the 4% increase for next year with nothing left to buy increase for buying material accounts.
We ran a million dollar surplus.
But Jim, I don't think last year they did what we are doing now and reconciled the budget to put in all these extra things and bring down the estimate, the expenditures that could be brought down as estimated. That's why we have 265.
Well, I need, I need to educate the kids. I need to educate the kids in this school, okay?
I think you do that for...
I think, I, I'm trying the hardest I can to try to provide them with the resources to do that. This is what, all I'm saying is, this is short money to do it. Put a sunset clause on it. If next year, all of a sudden, you think that there's gonna be a big problem, then we don't rehire. Put a sunset clause right in here. I think I have on the math interventionist, I have a statement in there that, that if all, if all categories don't improve 5%, then there's sunset clause on it. So I, I think I'm trying to be responsible, but I'm trying to give them the resources they need to move us forward.
I'm not opposed to the one and a half of positions in math interventionists. It's beyond, when we go beyond that and start adding in every other department, there's a little bit of panic that comes into me. I, I think we need to grow in a way that's sustainable. And that, we haven't even settled the support staff contract yet. And we know what our expenditures are going up by for salaries next year based on the teacher salary. And now we're adding on top of that. There's not gonna be money for increases in the line items that directly impact what happens in the classroom, like books and supplies. And we've been doing very well at getting that stuff into the classrooms. But if we start expanding on all positions, we're not gonna have any discretionary funds left to buy textbooks and computers and paper and pencils and that, little things that they need in the classroom. So I, I...
But you're already in the budget, don't you?
I'd really like to take it item by item or, or at least, you know, by, you know, if we can all agree on the top half, then let's take that as one motion and then do the others separately. Because I want to vote against some of those, because I don't think it's sustainable.
Matt, there's a motion in the second right now. Mike, I mean, I, I don't have a problem. If you, if you don't feel you can do it, then, then don't vote with it. I mean, but, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if, if any administrator thinks that this is going overboard, I, I mean, it's embarrassing, to be honest with you, that we had superintendents that were, that we interviewed tell us that our grounds or our schools don't look good. I've had, people say that. I've had to call a superintendent on different issues about grounds. It's embarrassing. So I'm trying to make the district better with short money, in my opinion, on these things. But again, so I'll catch it up a little bit.
Matt, Chad, that's a question. You've heard a lot of arguments. Do you have a motion before?
Could you read the motion and do a roll call, please? Thank you.
Do that.
Um...
The FY17 budget increases with an additional nurse teacher, additional math interventionist, unemployment compensation videographer, oil heat entered school, facilities, furniture, fixture at high school, truant officer, with the turnover loans at 189, 148, 0.5 math interventionist, 0.5 accounts payable clerk, subject to superintendent sign off, 0.5 maintenance tech grounds person, 0.5 computer tech.
Wasn't there a sunset provision?
And a sunset, sunset on the math interventionist for improved by 5% average in each category.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Can you do a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
No.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
No.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
No.
Motion for 43.
We wanna...
Okay, we have 7 minutes left.
Matt, I just want to technically, do we wanna pass the budget as amended or do we think we should have it?
We'll cover it.
Will that cover this?
Jim?
We're gonna do a motion.
Motion to pass the budget as amended.
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Oh, yeah, I have to, I guess.
Mr. Conell?
Yes.
Mrs. Gillette?
No.
Mr. Lombardi?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
Yes.
Mrs. Nato?
No.
I'm gonna change my vote to a no, please.
Motion passes 43.
Correct.
We have 6 minutes left.
I'm gonna be happy to answer.
I'd like to get to Mr. Root. I think Mr. Mayo probably needs a decision on whether we want to eliminate a bus or...
Mr. Shaw needs a, a decision on moving tools.
So we need the moving tools and we need the bus routes?
Can we lay up the calendar, Matt?
Motion to move both.
Second.
Any discussion, call favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion to purchase the movement tools from Home Depot.
Any discussion? Call on favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Next item, was it the bus route? No. The bus route?
Well, you've got in front of you the recommendations, Mr. Mayo, with the 13 buses, 12 buses. And I would, I mean, do you need, when do you need to know this, Mike?
I would, I would think, by the foot of law, I suppose.
Well, I, I'm gonna make, so he has an answer for, immediately, so they can start working on this. Because I don't know if we're gonna be meeting again before the August first. But I would like to recommend that we stick with 13 buses. I, I definitely believe that if we stick with the 13 buses, it's possible if we balance the bus riderships and scrutinize the routes more closely, we can eliminate the expenditure of the extra overtime hours. And if the, you know, the regular rate costs will be what the regular rate costs are. I'm very leery about eliminating a bus. I don't, I'm not quite understanding the numbers that are on the sheet. And I...
What you say, I'm reading this little, little chart, which I kinda like the chart. But, you know, you've got 760,000 if you did 13 buses with an over. Even if you took the overage out, you're saying it would be 713 if you did 12 buses. It's a $47,000 saving. You can take the overages out, you still have a $25,000 saving.
Right.
I would go back to the bus company. Be happy to do it with Mr. Mayo and say, sign up for the 713. If they believe the routes are that way, sign up for a fixie of 713. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out. But you, you lock them in.
I, I think, I'm gonna make mine as a motion that we direct the Daco to, and Mr. Mayo to work on the routes for 13 buses. And I'm, I'll explain that I'm going with the 13 buses because even though Bill and I don't always agree, he did say something earlier in the year...
But why don't you like to talk about it?
That, that the routes were very well organized, that the parents were happy, that the kids were happy. I know that when you, when you reduce a bus, you're putting more kids on the buses, you're making the rides longer for some kids. And I would prefer to spend the extra 23 and keep it orderly and try to just eliminate the overtime at this point. So I'm gonna make that as a motion. So we can discuss that.
What's the motion?
That we advise Mr. Mayo and the, and Daco to work on routes using the same number of buses next year as we are, as we currently use this year, the 13 buses.
I have a question. Mr. Mayo, do you have a recommendation?
My recommendation is I think that we can, I've worked with Jane Pepler, and we really think the 12 buses can, can work. It's gonna save the district about $50,000. And I also agree with John said, you know, I think if we get a flat number and go back to Daco and say, this is the number we want going forward, eliminate any, any possibility of the overtime from that point. So my recommendation would be 12 buses.
It's hard to imagine how cutting a bus is gonna save us money when we incur such extensive overtime charges. It's really counterintuitive.
Well, because the bus is $56,000 and the overtime, as you can see from the lineup here, you're, you're basically having 34,000. You're getting down 9,000 more. You're saving a total of 47,000. Put down to understand, I'm sorry.
We have 13 buses and we incur extensive overtime charges. And we're going to cut a bus and somehow reducing it to 12.
Your overtime, your overtime will stay the same with 13. It will go up a little bit with 12, okay? About $10,000. But you're saving the cost of a bus. So your, your net savings from what you're currently gaining would be 47,000.
It's right there on the chart.
Well, I know we've contended that the overtime charges were inappropriate. So I'm just wrestling with the decision to cut a bus when we still are waiting for resolution of the overtime charges that we incurred. We still don't have any resolution on that.
Okay. And I know that you're discussing that with Daco directly. I, I don't, I can't comment on that.
Well, how, how, if we say, for example, if for example, if we authorize 12 tonight, I mean, how locked are we into that?
We can change it.
Yeah, we can change it.
We're just...
You can pay for it.
I, I, you can pay any...
Wait, wait.
No, no, respectfully, I would ask Mr. Mayo first. I would just ask Mr. Mayo first.
If, if we found within the first two to three weeks that it was not working, we'd go back to 13. We are not locked into anything. We're gonna adjust as needed.
Because we adjust in the winter, don't we? I mean, we adjust in the summer and the winter. This winter, my sense is...
We go to winter routes.
Yeah, the way winter...
But, but then I'll hold on to it. If I look at the chart for those 13 buses, your overtime on 13 is 24,000 by 70, just to be clear. So the chart's right there.
Okay.
I don't know how you...
I don't, I, I would, I'm saying, strongly suggest that if we can get to a flat fee agreement and save money, I don't know why we're not going in that direction. I mean, I, this is, it's crazy. It will never come up again. It, it, it takes a half an hour of meeting talking about Daco at least, at minimum.
Because the reservation money is...
I, I, I think he just mentioned that he thinks he can get a flat fee agreement. Did you just not say that?
I, I think that that would be the best, best way to go, yes.
If we can pay more money, if we pay them more money than what we should be paying without the extra hours.
But that's not 71 instead of 76.
Bob, I have a question on your numbers.
Wait, wait, I mean, so what's the flat fee that you would propose that you think that maybe we can do?
I, I would recommend if we went with the 12 buses and that works, it would be a grant of $713,000.
And that's a savings of...
That's a savings of $47,000, which we would pay with 13 buses.
Thank you.
I think you should try to look at those numbers, because every time we've looked in the past, because we've been going down the road for well over a year and a half. I'm not prepared to vote on that tonight.
Can't you just authorize the 12? No, just find out. If we get some information...
Can't we turn to 13 and authorize the 12 later? How can we get the information from consultants?
Well, then you can't negotiate with Daco. Do I fit?
Sure you can.
No, you can't. What do we get, what do I get to get the flat fee or not?
I have a question. How many, on average, average minutes overage per day? What are we paying right now?
This plan...
No, what are we paying right now?
It would be 14 minutes a day per bus.
No, no. What are we paying now?
Well, we were 17 last, last year.
17 minutes.
Okay.
17 minutes per bus per day.
All right. Why do I have this April 7th memo from Mr. Lindbergh with CC to you and Lisa, and it said adjusted routes as of 4/7, 4 hours and 19 minutes average daily per bus? So it's 4 hours and 19 minutes in this memo that was delivered to us saying this is what we're paying overages. And we're...
It's not per bus, it's per day.
Not per bus, it's per day.
Per day, per day, okay, per day. And we're going to, and we're going to eliminate a bus and we're gonna go, only go up 2 minutes more per day. I think that's un...
No, no, he's not going up to, he's going up to 7.
No, he isn't.
He said, he's gone from 14 to 21.
No, 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 that's not 14, 21.
Right here, in this paper. He did the routes.
John, John, 4/7, 26.
But that's, that's, that's today. He's redone the routes. He said he changed the time. He's gonna go 7:12. He's done some other things to get the, the number down to 8 to 40 minutes.
We're having the buses start 3 minutes later in the morning. They're gonna get to the high school at 7:12 rather than 7:09. It's the first sentence in the pricening.
Yeah, and, and I mean, if, I don't even understand that, Bob, because the 6 of the buses are getting there at 7:03 in the morning. And so...
Mike, I, I don't know if we live, this is gonna help us. But, I mean, the answer is, we're gonna shoot for these numbers. I've discussed it with Daco. We think the numbers will work. We'll know for sure within the first 2 weeks of September. Now, I need to know either 12 or 13, and I'll do everything the committee wants us to do.
I need to know, second question. Why now are we recommending we eliminate a bus when in 2012, we had the lower population than we had this year, 2013 about the same, 2014 less? Why now are we recommending eliminating a bus when things have been so smooth and supposedly so great?
Because the ridership is down. We get more kids taking their cars, more parents driving their children, Mike. And that's why I'm doing it, okay? I told you this, I told the committee this back in January. My plan was to try to eliminate a bus next year.
Please, the motion, please, Sharon?
Direct Daco and Mr. Mayo to use 13 buses for 2,017 buses.
Is there a second?
Yes, Mr. Bassett.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bassett?
Yes.
Mr. Clifford?
Yes.
Mr. Conell?
No.
Mrs. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardi?
No, because I want a flat fee.
Mr. Raymond?
No.
Mrs. Nato?
Yes, motion passes 43.
So just for the record, we just spent an extra $50,000 on this.
No, we didn't.
But you were, but everybody was complaining that we couldn't add these positions in that would lessen.
These, these savings are...
Roll through a adjournment.
Is there a second? Any discussion, call on favor?